It's about seven o'clock, it already said it's seven o'clock. If we can all please stand, we'll do the pledge of allegiance, small prayer, and we'll start our meeting here. So Seth, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, please shine your grace upon us. Help us to make good and wise decisions. Help to keep our meeting peaceful and cordial. And please protect us as we all travel home. In your name we pray. Amen. Well, I'd like to welcome everybody here to the Wells County, September 5th, 2017 County Council Meeting. The first thing we have on the agenda is the transfers. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, the minutes. I assume everybody received their minutes? Does anybody see any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, do we have a motion to accept the minutes presented?
So moved.
We've got a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor signify by raising your hand. Oppose the same. Motion carries. All right, the next thing is transfers. And again, I assume everybody received transfers? We have a series of them here. We have the treasurer's office, postage of $25, or the dues and subscriptions for the same $25. Superior Court copies, copier supplies for 500, or not journal supplies for 500. The head administration, emergency services for $1,570.14 over to supervisor for $2,570.14. Then the hardware, able to repair, there's white things, A&amp;E projects, direct project, this is coming from those areas, over to, yeah, over to hardware and tools, COVID time, super pipe, medical equipment, safety equipment, and treatment area. And then if you want to stop, Josh's explanation was very thorough in that, I appreciate being aware of that, so. So I guess at this time, we're taking all, if there's any questions or concerns with transfers. So, or have a motion to accept the transfers presented?
I'll make a motion, Dylan, accept the transfers.
We have a second. All in favor, so if there's a resolution. Oppose the same. Motion carries. All right. Appropriation for the Health Department. Would you like to step forward? If there's any questions too?
So this is a grant opportunity that has been passed to us from the Centers for Disease Control through the State Department of Health. And basically each county is awarded, the monies that come from the CDC actually are split up per county and/or districts. So the amount that we are able to receive is $16,445. It actually started on July 1st. We had a few bumps in the road with getting it all approved and getting it in here before July 1st, and everything's ready to go. And so it'll be ending then on June 30th of 2018. The Public Health Emergency Response Grant is enhancing our state or our county, basically, to be able to be more prepared in case of a public health emergency. And it's very near and dear to us. If we think about Harvey right now and what's going on, and if you listen to any of that information down there, supplies and equipment are at a minimum, and hopefully nothing like that ever happens here. But we try and be prepared, we try and be level-headed about spending that money as well. As you can see, the funds are going to be used to purchase a fridge freeze to transport vaccine. So if it was a public health emergency where we need to inoculate everyone or treat everyone in the county, we have to do that. Our plan states 72 hours in order to do everyone in the county with some pod, but we have to be able to transport that. We do have one of those in our inventory right now. Some other things are just so that we could do triage in the event of a emergency and check for viruses or fevers and et cetera. Battery backup for our radios to use in the EOC. And this, this grant is, is for all of our partners, the EMA, the hospital, EMS. We've all kind of put our heads together in order to come up with what monies needs to be spent. Portable generators is another one that we're thinking about. We'll have them in strategic places they already have. EMA has already purchased some of those and put those in places. But there are a couple of areas in the county that has to be evacuated. And so we would put those portable generators there so that we'd be able to gear up in case of loss of electricity or any power. So that's what it's all about. We're ready to go on it. And we have some good partners and a good group putting this together and putting their heads together, come up with the items that we need to keep us more prepared, so.
So this is a total reimbursement then?
It is. So we all spend the money and the state will reimburse us.
Okay. I see the purchase order from, that you sent along with the explanation there, so it's...
Marley, as far as you know, there's no, there's no clawbacks, pitfalls, anything that you foresee?
No. We've been participating with these grants for probably eight to 10 years. And once we have the equipment, they don't ask for it back. We have to keep it in the inventory. Sometimes that's what the grant requires, is that we're inventoried every now and then. But yeah, we've got to...
So nothing major?
No, nothing major. Unless something happens. And then we don't have enough.
Need more. All right. Any other questions for Marley? Seems like it's pretty straightforward. Guess if not, do we have a motion to accept the additional appropriation for $16,445?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor signify by raising your hand. Oppose the same. Motion carries. All right, thanks, Marley. All righty. Ms. Marley, if you want to step forward?
Being a gentleman, I would yield to the judges if they wanted to. I'm going onstage, I'll leave the meetings.
Okay. I guess if we want to, we can, you guys are, Judge Ansham, do you have a meeting I thought of?
I had one earlier.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. I guess in the line there, we have Judge Kirkhoff, who wants to step forward. Next, we're doing the budget review since they're going to be busy on the 13th.
Yes, thank you very much for coming. Good news for myself, I'm taking this out of order here. So I mean, I have your hats on tonight. Hopefully, I can't speak for Judge Ansham, but if I can step forward.
I have your circuit court.
Oh, sorry.
That's what I got.
Yeah.
I think, again, thank you again for covering Judge Ansham myself. We have a, once a year we have a management conference we have to go to, but, and so if it's your budget hearings, we're going to fall during that pretty time. So thank you for allowing us to do this early. I think outside of my, with the exception of personnel, my request has actually gone down, or seems pretty straightforward. I think otherwise, there's a few little things we'll talk about. With, with personnel, it was my understanding, I was able to attend the department meeting, it was my understanding, the request to this, to put in a longevity increase in addition to any other increase. So typically, historically, I'd always asked for a 5% increase, and so they, I was told to do both. I don't know if that was the appropriate way to do that or not, but respect and personnel, just, obviously, my staff, I think my staff is really the raised, they work very hard for me, allow the court to function in a manner. And so just requested that they be considered for some, some type of raise. I understand that it's kind of across the board, and that's how the counties handled it previously, is to make all raises across the board. I should understand that. But again, I think my staff is deserving of one, nothing else to reward their loyalty. We've had a very lengthy, longstanding staff, recently replaced one person this last year, but she came from prosecutor's office. So most of my staff has had 10-plus years on, in the county government at some point. They've done real well for me. Off supplies have stayed the same, everything else is the same. One area where I did increase was the guarding item fee that was $20,000 last year, increased to 25. If recall, at one point I had to commit to additional appropriation. I'm always trying, that's kind of a target that I've always tried to hit, as opposed to trying to come in later and ask for additional appropriation. That's why I did it, to try to be a little more accurate about what I'm looking at. The juvenile public defender is a contract, public defender position, and we'll talk a little bit about that, I'm on the agenda later for that, we can talk a little bit about that later. A new one that's there is 3216, which is dual status. Indiana law, a year and a half ago, probably so in 2016, created a statute, I think in 2015 started it and allowed the judges to start using it in 2016, called dual status youth. They are juveniles who have both contact with the juvenile delinquency side of, with probation, who are juvenile delinquents, and also might be considered children of services. The goal is to try to have some coordination of services towards that, towards that juvenile, that maybe there's some larger things going on in their home, or their environment that need to be addressed. So they have what's called dual status youth. They get, they're delinquent and children of services. They would like, what we've been using is what's called a, an assessment or coordinator, someone who's kind of a neutral person. I use John Horn, who was the former guidance counselor at Norwalk High School, Norwalk Middle School, as the coordinator. He kind of coordinates a meeting that they're required to have when, when these meets are identified as dual status. He coordinates meetings, helps coordinate which agencies going to be the lead agencies. They make recommendations of whether or not the matter should be pursued as a juvenile delinquency matter, which should be pursued as a chins matter. And they can make those recommendations. They can bring in school officials, parents, lawyers, anyone else I think is appropriate to make some decisions about what goes on with the youth and then put what's presented to the court. So that's the only difference. I've been paying for that this year out of my guardian alitem expenses, just for his time. I pay him, he's, we're at the rate of $80 an hour, his, his time. They have meetings, they have to have meetings in 10 days that make the appointments. There's some urgency at the meetings, they're important, but, and the problem is you don't know when they're going to have them. So that's what, so we requested $1,500, it's kind of what I estimate I'm going to spend this year. Again, like I said, we've been using the guardian item funds, it kind of fits in that category, but I thought we ought to set that aside as a separate line item to address those needs. That's the one new thing. Otherwise, everything is pretty much the same. I went down a little bit in the pallor attorneys category. It was $65,000 last year, asked for 50 this year, so it's down $15,000. Otherwise, everything is, I think, pretty much the same as, as previous years. Nothing has changed too much there. So take any questions.
Second, I asked her.
You didn't have the number?
Oh, yeah, that's what the number, okay. I got you, I got you.
That was my question.
I got you.
Your pallor transfers, I think.
Yeah, the issue, yeah, we're, we're doubled.
Did I go up? I think that reflects, I'm sorry, I missed out. It reflects, what we try to do is based on what we've actually used with, last year's budget plus additional appropriations, so that's, that's what I've got there.
Okay.
And that's, and that's just, that's one of the areas that's kind of a, I just never know what it's going to be.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Judge Kirkoff? All right, sounds good.
Okay.
All right, we appreciate you.
Do you want to handle Judge Ansham's budget?
I was going to say, who's...
Will we discuss the other issues, or do you want to?
Is it, you think it'll be very lengthy, or?
Well, they both are going to talk about that.
How about, when we talk about that?
Come on, not that way.
I'd just like to also extend a thank you for allowing us to be here today. It's been really difficult, if not impossible, for us to be here on that following Wednesday.
Sure.
Again, there's one conference that we are required to be at, where they have an annual meeting, and that's just one. So thank you for doing your part today.
Most likely, we're looking at the public defender, state, maybe that's a program for two of the...
As you all know, the United States Constitution, Indiana Constitution requires the right to counsel, and that would be provided to, to a person who's considered indigent if they can afford an attorney of their own. The right to counsel attaches at a couple different types of cases, namely criminal cases, children of services, termination parental rights, mental health commitments, juvenile delinquencies, child support contempt, and any of the appeals of any of those cases that we just talked about. In Indiana law has, and federal law has developed that the cost of that public defender be borne by the, by the county, by the taxpayers. And so courts are aware of that. Our solution thus far has been to have a contract, which we have for public defenders. We have one dedicated strictly to juvenile delinquents. And then we have three adult public defender positions that are on a contract that I think, I don't, I think it's partially on my behalf, and so my, and Ms. Davis may know better than I, it's partially on half, we split it into two courts, that contract.
The contracts are in the commissioner's budget.
It's in the commissioner's budget, thank you.
Yep.
So, let me hear, some.
Thank you, sir.
Let me check together what, what that contract is. So the juvenile portion is $28,000, and then the three adult public defenders. I show a total, there's one for $15,000. What that is, and I apologize in casual, one of the public defenders actually left before the expiration of their contracts. We brought someone else in to cover that, so it's paid, I don't know whether that's paid. But at the end of the day, looking at $174,000, almost $175,000 on public defenders that are contracted. In addition, there's a sheet I gave you, I expended another $41,000 on public defender fees outside of that contract. That can be either because there's a conflict of interest, and we had to go outside of our three public defenders, appeals, which I have an agreement with, with the attorneys to do that at a fixed cost. I did, had to have juvenile termination hearings, which were attorneys that weren't part of the, they were typically part of the contract, but these ones weren't. Appeals for those, the children of the services cases that will fall outside of the contract. So these are the areas, so that's, I spent additional $41,000 on that. And then we talked about this in the budget portion, I budgeted for next year, $50,000 next year for that, for that, that portion. That's what, that's what that's going to be, that's what I requested is going towards that section half of this. The total over case I have in an appointment of public defender was 205 in circuit court, just in criminal cases. That's where I pointed, that would be revocation, subprovision, and new criminal cases. So that's, that's how it's been. Historically, we paid public defenders on a hourly basis. That got a little, a little bit high, and so I think there was a decision for my, my term. They went to a contract.
I'd add something to that. What had happened was that there were fewer individuals that practiced criminal laws. We were pulling attorneys from Port Wayne, Adams County, and Jay County, and Huntington County. And they were also billing for their travel time. So those hourly rates really started getting much more than the courts had anticipated. And they went to a bid situation for taking cases for the full year at a certain bid level. That's historically how that kind of goes.
So that's a little of the background on that. So the contracts then were originally bid out, several years, maybe 10 years ago, if there's more at this point. Those contracts were bid out. And that's, that's what resulted in why there's a little bit of, if you look at the actual contracts, they're a little bit odd. Some of them, for example, one of them only handles criminal, one of the lowest amounts, only handles criminal. One of them handles chins, and teratals, and criminal. And then one of them only handles and juveniles. It's, it's, so it's kind of needs to be, there's some disparity. And it doesn't add up if you think, well, we've added, we've made the criminal section this much, we made the juvenile delinquents this much, and the chins this much. It doesn't quite add up. So I think if nothing else, what we decided with public defenders, I think that contract needs to be looked at a little more in depth, and needs to be kind of straightened out a little bit in some ways. Because one of the public defenders, for example, handles half the caseload of criminal, that's what the original bid was for. So I think that just needs to be something we look at, maybe divide it up a little bit differently. Perhaps adding any other public defender in some way to, to, not, not a lot of money, but sort it out a different way. There's, there's having, it needs to be looked at in one way or the other. I looked into materials Mr. King provided regarding the public defender reimbursement, commission. It looks like to me, as I, as I read it, the next stage will be a decision by counsel or commissioners or both to allow the commission to do a study to determine, tell us whether or not it's feasible to go for a defender reimbursement program. That, that's where I see it. This is part of the materials I read, looking at their website and going to there. Not all counties are in it, a lot of the counties do a situation like we're in, where they do it hourly. That, that seems to be, it's about split half and half between going to the commission or just paying it hourly. I think if we're going to do it here, it probably require the creation of a, how, depending what the commission would tell us, it looks like it might require the creation of some type of public defender office. So right now, that's not an expense we currently have, that overhead, the attorneys in the contract system, attorneys are incurring a lot of it themselves, so.
So there could be some strings involved?
And I'm not saying there may not be strings, we have, and I understand that's just something we need to keep an eye out for. Right now, looking at what I just presented, we're spending quite a bit on public defenders as it is, so.
I can't remember, Counsel McKing, was that a full, it was just a partial reimbursement, wasn't it?
It has been 40%, and maybe up to 50% sometime soon, is my understanding.
Anything to keep in mind, a couple of things. One, the public defender hourly rate, so when we pay it, that section half, that second half of the, of the paper I just gave you, those were paid at $8 an hour, and I think January, July 1st, it just went up to 90. And it's supposed, I think according to the shows, I think it's supposed to go up to 120 at some points, what I read. These are, they have a kind of a timeframe. So that, that's something to consider as well. So I'm, I'm not opposed to it. I'm not, I'm not sure that it'll be a fit for us, but I'm certainly open to this, having a discussion.
I would be interested, you know, it'd be interesting to talk to some other counties that are participating in, just to say, well, you know, before you...
Would, would you agree, though, that the system we have in operation right now is seamless and working?
I, I would say it is. And I, I think the attorneys that we have as independent contractors are happy with the system that we're in, which makes it a little bit better for us, knowing that we don't have to look for someone new every year. We have someone that decided to go and do more federal work, and we were able to find someone pretty quickly after doing some interviewing. But the, the, how we have it now, I think some of them do exercise the ability to use the healthcare offering that we have. But we don't pay per, we don't pay life, house, you know, any, any type of border type stuff. We don't pay any staffing for them. They're going to take care of all that based upon the amounts they've received. So that's one of the pluses behind the system. But I'm like Judge Kirikoff, in that I'd be willing to listen and see whether or not it's something that we would be interested in doing. Like Searns, our, what he's also stated, though, we're going to have to put together a public defender office, we're going to need building space, we're going to need the staff. And so there's going to be additional costs, whether or not that is worth us going after reimbursement. I think I, I told Counsel McKing, when this first came out, I actually created one of these for Wells County, and we used it for two years, and we never got any money. One year, they had a cap case that took all of the reimbursements that were available, and they spent it all on the, the one county that had the capital case. And the, the second year, if we didn't get it, there were some finger pointings going on there. I can't tell you honestly, I know exactly what happened that second year. But my recollection is that the, the judges and the, and the auditor at that point decided that it wasn't worth the amount of work that it took to submit and not get any reimbursement. We did have a three-person public defender council that was created. I believe the commissioners chose one person, and each of the judges were to pick one person. That's how it was back then. I don't know if they do now, because they've been out of this area for such a long time. But I will say, what was helpful to, to see, too, in blue, are the counties that get reimbursement for non-capital cases, and gray are the counties that do not get reimbursement for capital cases. And you can see, not everybody's doing it. My amount of people that are being paid at the hourly rate is not the same numbers as what Judge Kirikoff is. I think even in my budget, I'm only asking for $8,000 to cover that area. Because I do see some of it, but not near the volume because of the chins and the termination proceedings. I'm guessing every, your numbers really quick bump. And I know it's going to happen soon, but I don't have very many appeals either. So, you know, at that point, maybe I'm going to see some jump there, too. But as far as those numbers that you see, I think all of the people that are working are satisfied with the caseload they're getting. They get a heavier caseload for me because I do misdemeanors and level six felonies, and there's just plain workloads than there are the, you know, for level felonies. So they get a lot more appointments, but their cases are able to move much more quickly and, and to either resolution or dismissal, or whatever might happen. But I don't think I have anything else, questions for Marley.
No, I think, I think it's good food for thought, what we're looking at and what you came back with. So I guess we'll just kind of keep picking away at it and see if there's some information, any other information from some of the other counties that maybe have been this type of...
I really appreciate your research and your presentation, though. I mean, it's...
Thank you. How do you want to proceed? I've, I've got some calls out to some neighboring counties, see how they do it. I've got a return call on that, but...
That's fine. Just say if you get any information, just let us know.
I don't know, if you're looking for...
We don't want to waste a lot of time on some if it doesn't, yeah.
Again, I don't know. I think, I think the materials you gave and looking at their website, I think the next step is us making an official decision to have them look at it.
Look at it?
So, I don't know how we leave it at that, but, well, that comes from you, like Commissioner and Sir.
Well, my, my understanding is the commissioners have to be involved.
Yeah, they would be the executive.
Initiate the proceeding. So, and I'm not even sure if they even know that we've been discussing this.
Yeah, I don't think they're, they're even informed about it, so. I, I would say maybe we'll put a bug in the ear with the commissioners and see where they want to go with it.
I think both of us would be amenable to showing up at a commissioner's meeting to answer questions or to let them know what we're doing.
Like I said, we just looked at it and, you know, if there'd be some savings there, it'd be great, you know, it's one of those situations, so. That's good, okay.
But if it's not broke and doesn't need fixed, we don't want to rock the boat.
I definitely, I definitely want to have, I must give Judge Ansham, I want to have the contract at least.
Don't want to, yeah.
I think that, it means that we need to at least do that. I think that is a situation where it is a little bit. It's okay now, because everyone's working. At the moment, we have an opening. That's when it gets a little bit, trying to understand why there's kind of the disparity they were making in their caseloads, like to have a little more ironed out as far as... coming up, they're making their caseloads, like to have a little more ironed out as far as that everyone's doing the same thing. I mean, for example, that, the cases that I gave you, the determination to get, oh, the juvenile cases, some of that area, I'd like to have that straightened out so that, a lot of that is due because I really only have two attorneys on that side of it, that contract. I'd like to have someone else that would, that would add another person and I wouldn't have to come out of the, out of the miscellaneous public defender fees that I have, so.
That's good information. Thank you both. Up in there. Thank you, gentlemen. Judge Antrim, do you want to go ahead and start with your, that would be for Superior Court?
The increase that you'll see as far as staffing is the 55% increase on those particular salaries. Most of the rest of my budget, you'll see a zero percent request increase or decrease. As far as where I'm at right now, I feel comfortable that I'm going to be fine going through the end of the year with what I have in those line items. Again, with general supplies, I have the amount of one thousand eight hundred dollars. The reason that we needed that increase was, again, as you might know, I have a new court reporter. My court reporter is responsible for much of how these show up in lines. And I had a couple of capital type entries that happened in the general supplies. So that five hundred dollars that you approved today is going to make me more whole in that area and, and going forward. I still think that's a good number that I have on there. Travel and lodging, I put a comment or a note, again, signing it reflects the amount expended in two thousand sixteen. The service contract, you were gracious enough to give me new recording equipment, digital recording as well as amplification in order to keep those items serviced. That's part of that contract. And also copier service contract. Dues and conferences hasn't changed. Again, many of these just, they haven't changed. Psychiatric services, again, I didn't change that, but I also put in that this would only pay for one.
Yeah, we show, we show that that did go up. You see it, it went up a thousand dollars.
Doubled.
Yeah, doubled. So, so did.
I think what I did.
So did translation services also there.
I, I think what I did then there was take a look at what I had done the year before. And you're right, I think you did cut it a thousand.
Yeah, then, I'm, we're looking at adopted budgets, so that would be different than the.
I'm, I'm simply looking at the.
Requested.
The percentage that they have here listed for me. And again, so as far as capital equipment, that number's gone down again because you supplied the, I asked for carpeting and chairs. This is for a new printer in the courtroom, a new router for the courtroom. The prosecutor's office has gone paperless and they need the use of that router. And for some reason, they have, their computers have difficulty. So I talked to Roger and Roger thought that if we upgraded that router, that would solve their problem with their computers. As far as chair for the court chambers, upgrading courtroom laptop and PC in the court chambers, again, neither of those are super old, but when I talked with Roger, he indicated that your upgrades should be done on those to increase their speed. As far as, again, law books and offer attorneys, I don't see any change in either one of those. Of course, I could be wrong because I'm looking at this particular.
Yeah, no, it hadn't changed. Law books are the same.
In fact, I think without the request for the item that was talked about during our person, the meaning of department heads, that longevity increase, you'd actually see a decrease in the budget that I presented. The longevity actually puts it a little bit higher, but I think it would be a decrease otherwise. I'm not putting anything in front of you that's any fluff. Quite frankly, I'd never believe that that's what you should do when you're asking for someone in a budget situation. If something doesn't match up here, I'll be back before you. But again, to reiterate, as far as my staff, I've got two on staff. Circuit Court actually has one additional person on staff that I do. We've been making that work. I'll tell you, though, we're getting a lot busier. But I believe we can make that work again this next year, so we're not asking for anything there. But I will tell you, there may be a day that I come before you and I'm asking for an additional person because Circuit Court and I do a, a very similar amount of volume of work. But at least at this point, I'm not asking for that. Believe that what I'm presenting in front of you is what's needed for my court to operate in a responsible fashion.
Any questions for Judge Antrim?
I, I have a question, just, just for clarification, the longevity pay. Since you have a new court reporter, is that included, is, is that money included in there for her since she will?
She was a court bailiff and has been part of the court staff for over fifteen years. I believe when I talked to Beth, that amount was four thousand five hundred dollars that I added in. And for the newest person I have as bailiff, I thought it was five hundred dollars. Am I incorrect in thinking those were the numbers that were presented?
That was just when Mr. Lustenheiser put the whole, he gave those numbers out and I watched people watch. And I think I got that in your budget books too, in the various part of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you kind of looked to see where people come up with maybe some numbers.
If you minus those two numbers out of what I presented, I thought I came down almost twenty-five hundred dollars, three twenty-five hundred dollars and three thousand dollars in what I asked previous year.
Any other questions? Is it done? We appreciate you coming in and.
Yeah, and I really do thank you for the work that you do and also letting me do this today as opposed to not being able to present at all.
Our meetings change this September, so it's not, and not anything that you guys are. Probably didn't change.
All right. Monty? Come back up here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We had a hundred and twelve inmates, seven of our DOC, twenty-one are F six DOC. The numbers we have after court today, I think we're down to a hundred and ten now.
So it popped up from last, last month here, yeah.
We were holding for another county and there were basically females and we had to call them and tell them that they had to come together. I'm really, we're busting to see. We have our monthly report. There is one thing that we apologize for, our DOC, per diem, that we bill DOC for housing prisoners. We didn't have that figured while it was printed up. I do have it figured. Thirty thousand seven ninety-five. This is what we bill, uh, projecting billing DOC for the month of August. So that brings us up to two hundred, projected two hundred and eighty-four thousand four Which brings our total in the right far column at the bottom, three hundred thirty-four thousand eight sixty-nine and thirty cents. That's our projected. We come back in so far. Everything is, I got wood here, running halfway good right now. We did replace one of our five boilers. Our boilers run in sequence, so we replaced the number one boiler that runs most of the time. And they tore it open and it was not ready to fail, so. Think I've got enough that I can replace number two also, just to be on the safe side.
Okay.
Try to.
I assume this is smaller than the other one that you replaced, I assume?
What?
That's smaller than the one. You're talking about boiler or water?
Boiler.
Oh, okay, for heating, okay.
For the heating.
Gotcha, okay.
Sheriff, is our DOC per diem, their reimbursement, is it coming in on a timely matter? I know at one time.
Have to ask Beth on it.
At one time, we had issues with the.
I don't think it, or, I don't think we're having any issue. I'm not sure where we're at today, but I don't think there's any issues right now.
Nothing like it. I know there.
A few years ago, we had a real problem with it. Yeah, it was real.
Year, two years ago.
Yeah, when I just worked on the miscellaneous revenue, I didn't notice that we was like way behind right then, so I think we're keeping up pretty good.
And there is the study committee now looking at raising the per diem. So we've been fighting that, for that for a while and hopefully this time for next year it will pass.
Is it still thirty-five?
Still thirty-five, what it started at. They're looking to go to fifty to fifty-five.
Monty, I happen to notice there was a, a lot more miles driven this year. Is there more patrolling or is it just?
Guys are out there all the time. You see our calls are up a little bit too and that adds to it. I don't like them sitting around, wanting to drive around and being seen even on third shift. I like them, you know. I used to make it a policy, you know, just a goal of mine to hit every small town and that in, if I was a South Car, you know, Phoenix and Dillon and all of them, don't get traveled much, I like to hit that area. Then the North, North keeps us busy anyway.
I was curious, how many are on patrol on a day shift and a night shift in general?
Day shift, we have, we have two on. And if there's a vacation or something like that, usually Scott and I cover for them. Night shift and second shift and third shift, we usually try to have three on.
Okay.
And we have a north and a south and then a rover. It, it can respond to any calls the other ones get.
Thanks.
You need any questions for Monty? As I say, we'll be amendments through the amendments attention.
It's just changing the actuary figures so that change for the drop program that we've brought in. We're just figuring that up from one long sum so I can figure it up to monthly benefits.
We need to make official action on that.
Yeah, we need to have use just once a year. The states need to approve, approve the amendment.
The council does?
Yes.
Oh, we have to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I assumed, did you, everybody receive that, that Monty had sent over on that amendment to the, because this is determined through the board, right?
Well, the mayor's board.
The board, yeah, approves everything, so it's.
It's sent to us from one America, um, the Green Day team.
Yeah, yeah. So any questions for Monty? I mean, it's kind of dry to me, I didn't see, I mean, we've done this before with their decisions. Any questions?
We'll make a motion to accept the amendment.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Full in favor, signify by raising a hand. Close the session. Who cares?
Thank you.
Looking easy, yeah. All right, thanks, Monty.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Does he need this before we?
No, he said he'll pick it tomorrow.
Okay, okay.
Because there's some.
Okay. Yeah, we'll do that. All right. Next thing we have on the agenda is the public hearing for amendments to property tax replacement, property tax relief and public safety cost. I guess Beth, would you like to explain those three, because we're also getting involved with the thaw?
Yes.
Part of the thaw, so we're going to.
All kinds of things, you know, so, because we had Darren here a few months ago and talked to you all about what would happen if we changed our property tax credits and shifted that amount to the public safety, you know, how that would affect, you know, income for counties and municipalities and how it would affect property tax bills for homeowners. And then we also talked about the levy freeze that we currently have and the issues that we have with the levy freeze that we no longer are bringing in. We have not increased the tax rate for our levy freeze. We no longer are bringing enough money for income tax to support levy growth. So we have to, we're really at no option more, less than to thaw because if we don't thaw, like I explained in the last meeting, then taxing units would be shorted money when it comes to tax distributions. So I have that before us, you know, is to go ahead and we have an ordinance that is ready to be signed. I have sent it to the state to review three different times and they never did get back with me. I finally called them today and said, hey, we have a meeting tonight. And they did email me and they did say that just this couple of changes because the levy freeze statute has all been mostly repealed. One else can never enter into a levy freeze. They, so the.
From the original statute.
Yes. So the thirteen counties in the state that did was the only thirteen counties that's ever going to because they've repealed the statute now. So you can't, so just different things on that. We still can go ahead and adopt the ordinance, that's not a problem, but you, we might have to change some of those to say that they repealed ordinance, you know, some just some wording things. And I forwarded that to Roy, so he'll get that ready for us. But we do meet with George Hilton next week. Yes, next Monday and Tuesday, he'll be meeting with taxing units. And we've got several taxing, representing different taxing units here today. But they need to know what we're going to do as far as our levy freeze at that point, so that way he knows how to proceed with the taxing units. So that's why we need to decide on what we want to do with the taxing unit today. And I know we kind of just said we was going to just kind of let it go and discuss it at this meeting. Then also, I put in the notices so that way people would be able to comment if you are looking at doing any other changes, like what Darren had talked about as far as changing the credits. And the, just to let everybody know, this does not change income tax rate. Our county's income tax rate is two point one percent and it would not change that whatsoever. All what we'd be doing is shifting and not having the, the rate on the property tax credit would be less and the rate for the public safety would be more. What that does is put more money into public safety and public safety is what would go to county and municipalities. It doesn't go to townships because it's just basically for public safety. Although there is an ordinance, or there is a way, you can also use that to support nine-one-one centers, you know, those PSAP centers. But you have to adopt an ordinance to be able to use some of that money for that. So that's why we advertise for all this because with budgets coming up, we still can do changes. They have to be done in this month. So we have to have them sent in by the first of October in changes that we would be making. And so I don't know if any of the other taxing units have questions or if you all have questions or.
I was going to say, I think, I think from where we left the last meeting, we kind of come to, I've seen more of agreement to the thaw as far as dealing with any of the other options, the credits for the tax credits and the different, different options. And again, that's where we left the last meeting. I guess at this stage, is there any council members that have questions? Because it's a little confusing when you start having three of these amendments for the property tax replacement, property tax relief and public safety cost. And that's totally different than the thaw.
Exactly.
So just, there's actually like four different things we're looking at here, I guess, is a little, and it does get a little confusing, some different things. Is any council members having, we're not really starting for the public comment yet, but just trying to get a discussion for any of the questions on the property tax replacement, property tax relief for public safety costs? Did any of the council members have, come back to where Darren was with, you know, that got a little confusing, understanding that part versus the thaw part of it, so.
Yeah, it's basically if you need more revenue to support budgets.
Coming off property tax side versus income tax side, that's the whole difference here.
Way to put more money into revenue to support municipalities.
And, and when we, when we decided to take the thaw, it was before I came on council, so back in two thousand and eight or in that range, it, I mean, basically by thawing, we did not grow in, in the property tax side. We, we were frozen, our levy was frozen. So for all these years, we haven't increased at all from the counties. Now, that excludes the school corporations, they're totally, they're controlled by the state. But as far as all the other taxing units, there was no increases above and beyond that thaw, that freeze.
For property taxes.
For property taxes. So by thawing, that changes that and opens it up to where we can grow per what the state allows us to. Am I correct in that? They, they give us a rate that they're allowing, if, if there's a growth rate from the property They, they give us a rate that they're allowing, if there's a growth rate, from the property tax side and not the income tax side.
Right.
Because we, I think we all agree, not in our heads, we didn't want to increase probably, or income tax, the lit tax. We were looking more, if we did the thaw, we're looking for income coming from the property tax side.
Do we have to go up to the same rate that the state says we can, or is there rates?
That's the max.
That's, yeah, you're, you're, your growth, or your growth portion that you, yeah, that's what your levy can grow.
Can grow.
Can grow, yeah.
So there is a limitation, you can't just own it up and.
Can be less, right, if we should decide that, correct?
You can't grow more. Love it growth.
Love it growth.
But our reality today is that without thawing this, we will have a shortfall.
We draw more for stabilization. And that is the whole thing, we brought this up, was the draw of the stabilization that's been compiling, and now, because all the taxing units, once they get to a certain point, and if it takes more, it starts to draw off of that stabilization, is that correct, how it works?
This is our third year to pull from stabilization. And at our growth rate, then we would defeat stabilization, we may have one or left, and at that point.
It hits pretty quick, and it's, it's still confusing to me, how it grows, how they determined it to happen, it's fast, that's the way that, you know, and the, you know, when you come from the distribution, seems like all at once, why did this get out, happen so fast? You know, it just, to me, it's always been a question, but.
Well, it didn't, you know, it's just like, three years ago, it was two hundred, then it was two sixty-five, now it's seven oh nine, you know, so it just, it grows with your levy growth.
Yeah.
You know, so as, when your levies grow, it's growing through income tax rather than property tax. So the income tax request, you know, what, what units have, are requesting to support their budgets is the money that's needed. And when you don't have that much income tax coming in, the portion that you need to support your budget more, and, and we have money in stabilization to.
Offset down?
Yes, what we're offset. But if we don't make a change, we will, we can't keep pulling from it, because if it keeps growing more, we need, every year, the more we need to pull out, stabilization is growing, and it will continue to.
Beth, can you come up with a number that we can discuss, a percentage of the growth, growth quotient that we're allowed to go to, a percentage of?
Four percent.
Four percent.
A portion of that, and still be able to put money into the stabilization fund?
No, we can't put money in stabilization through that.
We still, we cannot.
It'd still be tapped on that stabilization.
No, we're already not, we're already not bringing in enough income to support it.
Understood, understood. But anything, if we go three percent, we still, we won't be putting money in stabilization?
We'll, we'll never put money into stabilization again.
Okay.
So that, that's where the key to budget also, it's twofold, it's not necessarily just revenue coming in, it's also.
I suppose we could come up and go over a little bit, but that's a possibility.
No, it's not enough.
No, it, yeah, we can't. That would, every unit of government, we probably have to go up to their twenty-ten budget, or, yeah, twenty-ten budget maybe, and then at that point, then, then maybe. So, and that's not going to happen, you know, so nobody could go backwards, so.
So, yeah, it's, you know, for me, it's twofold, you're, if we do thaw, we still have to, we have to be incredibly disciplined in the budget, and probably not win any popularity contests here coming forward, because it's still going to have to be disciplined with our spending.
The only way you could put more in is if you increase the rate.
Increase rate.
Yeah. Your levy, your income tax rate, yeah, you have to increase your income tax rate.
And that's where we're in the top third, basically, of, we're property tax side, we're in the lower third, in that lower line.
There's only a couple counties that's higher tax rate than what we are on their levy freeze tax rate, and I think of the thirteen counties, I think has thawed. So, our levy has thawed, there's us and one that hasn't.
So, is there a projection each percentage would bring in? I guess that's what, I, that's what.
I was waiting, you were still hoping to go.
So if it's one percent, two percent, three percent, we can only have four?
Well, we're at point four percent. We can go up to one percent in your levy freeze growth. You can go up to that, but we would have to probably go up point two percent more in our income tax rate.
That's raising the income tax.
That's raising the income tax.
We're not. Not talking about income tax, I'm talking about if you thaw.
Right.
How much money does each percentage bring in? You know what I'm saying?
Uh-uh. Because we don't have a percent.
Well, you said we can only have a growth quotient of four percent.
Yes, that means your levy can only grow four percent.
On property tax.
Yes.
On property tax.
Yes, so your, your, your budget can only grow four percent.
Right.
Your, well, for whatever your levy, not your budget, whatever your levy is this year, it'll only grow up four percent for next year. So.
So if you take off the thaw?
Mm-hmm.
How much money, I mean, it's not unlimited as to where we can go with increase, so how much money does that projected, how much money does that bring?
For property taxes, I can't answer that.
Yes, okay, I know.
I wouldn't even pretend to know that answer. Yeah.
So how do we know what type, what we want to do? I guess that's what I'm getting at. How do we know where we want to go with that?
About the numbers?
Well, you'll know where, because you, you can only grow so much, so your budget can only be up to the maximum levy. That's why most units of government always budget their max levy, you know, because you budget that amount. So, because if you don't budget that, you're not going to get it next year, you're not going to make it up. So, you know, you, you budget for, it just increases your operating balance, if you don't need it to support your unit of government, you know, so, but like I said, your levy, and it all just depends on what kind of balances you have in your bank accounts and, and all kinds. I, I wouldn't.
I didn't know with assessed value, knowing the assessed value, figuring a percentage of something, if you could come up with a, a number, if there's a number out there that we could come up with to know what kind of increase we're talking.
Would it be based upon the amount of property taxes you received from the previous year? You take four percent against that? Up to four percent, is that how they would?
But, like I said, your levy.
That would be, I'm curious to know.
No, income tax as well, I mean, your property tax is not going to go up that, you know, it just, I don't know.
Yeah, no.
You're asking questions that I can't, yeah, I really can't answer, I, yeah, I'd have to.
How much of an increase does it, you know, for just the county side, against all taxing units that are involved in the county, they're all drawing off property tax also. And I was, I was wondering, where's that, what's that four percent based on, the amount from the previous year?
Your levy from last.
Would be the max you could gain, so let's say, I'm just going to use four million dollars in, in property taxes, is that four percent, so is that around one hundred and sixty thousand?
That's how much you could grow.
You can grow, so that would be the amount, if we thawed, that would be the amount that could be brought up to, basically, for Wells County if we, so that would be, I'm guessing that's how.
So if that, does that make sense?
Let's get the foot of the question out.
Yeah, I think that's.
I'm sorry, it'd be so confusing, you know, with talking to levies and assessed values and you're talking about budget.
And the way it's been working is that amount of growth was coming through income tax, that's why we was always needing more.
We were drawn off that end, not off the property tax side.
So, great, thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. So really, if we look at it from that, that number, that's about the dollar amounts we're looking for next year's budget, around one hundred and sixty thousand, just in round numbers, the four percent of that property tax, right?
Well, I've not met with George yet.
Yeah.
You know, and my question to George was, is what will our levies be if we thaw? He could not answer that question.
Okay.
Him and I both sent it to the state, and the state still has not got back to us.
So that's where we're.
So, you know, until I meet with him next week, I, I really don't know, you know. But yes, I mean, that is exactly, you know, whatever your, your levy was last year, if we, we can only grow four percent, so budget wise, you can only grow four percent, but.
I think probably we all wonder what those real numbers are here, obviously, as a council.
That's why we threw out all these other options out there too, you know, just in case you want to make any other changes.
But in a nutshell, if we don't do the thaw, we know what the repercussion will be.
Eventually, yeah.
Yes, taxing units.
So you, you have to do thaw, I mean, you don't have any other choice.
I was going to say, I think we have.
Your stabilization.
Before we run out of money.
Yeah, your stabilization money can't last with what you said, the projection was of one point five million dollars for next year.
Next year, mm-hmm, yes, and so that would wipe us out within two years, and then taxing units would be shorted.
Yes, and they won't.
The amount that we're pulling out right now to support their budget, and, you know, the counties right now, this year was three hundred thousand, so if we went next year, it could be six hundred thousand, so that, that would be what you'd be shorted when it comes to distribution, tax distribution. So we don't want that to happen.
But you're saying because of the budget meeting you have with George, we really, are we still going to make any kind of decisions on that now?
What's our timeframe? This is.
Well, the levy growth is either way, I mean, you know, we know that we don't have enough, we either have to increase our rate, our income tax rate, or we have to thaw. I mean, that's our only two options that we have, you know, so you either increase your tax rate, or you thaw the levy freeze, you know, so that way, growth can start coming from property taxes, because income taxes aren't increasing enough to support the growth. So, and we're already pulling from it, so it's not going to get better, it's just going to get worse, so.
And the other option is, is to raise income tax.
Yes, you could raise income tax.
These other three, three amendments that we're speaking of, that's basically.
No, that's different, yeah. That, that wouldn't be increasing income taxes, just your levy freeze portion of that rate would increase, which would increase your income tax rate.
Okay.
Yeah, those other things we're talking about would not be increasing the tax rate, it would only be lowering the portion of credit that we get and putting it into public safety. So it's just the same amount of money is going to come, that the, the dollar amount that we get for income tax is going to stay the same, it's just that we would give more money to public safety than what we would give to property tax credits.
And homeowners would get tagged or something.
Yes, it would be less credit on homeowners' tax bill.
And it wouldn't affect the businesses or ag, it would be just homeowners.
Yes, homeowners, because that's where the credit goes, homeowners and.
What we really need is population growth.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
The only way that we could solve this is population, yes.
More, more income growth.
And that would be run, if you get people to come here and work here.
I'm curious if non-residents come into our county and, and work, and then go back to their counties, do you think that's affected as to where transit employees in the county versus people that live here? Has that made a difference, you think? Because that's a different percentage, right? I mean, they, non-residents only get a certain, they only pay a certain percentage of county tax when they live in another county, right?
Well, they pay their county tax.
Their county tax, so Wells County doesn't get that, that tax.
Right.
So the more people you have coming in from another county, working in your county and then going back and residing, doesn't help you, so that also.
So we need people to move here.
To live here, actually, to make that, make that all work on the.
Full circle comes back to the lack of housing options in behalf of.
It can be.
We're just not growing, our income tax rate is not growing to support budgets for taxing units.
Well, I guess at this point in time, can we go ahead and open it to the floor as far as the public hearing? I'd like to go ahead and open this, open the floor after the public hearing for amendments to property tax replacement, property tax relief, and public safety costs. I know it's a little confusing, but if there's anybody in, in the room that would like to have concerns or questions at this point in time, you're more than welcome to stand up and state your name and where you reside, and just comment on it if you'd like to. I guess we have nobody at this point.
No questions?
We don't have any questions, we just want to make sure we're.
There are, there are no stupid questions, there isn't.
Yeah, definitely, because it's.
Just to piggyback on what Beth said, this comes from me, an old timer, the levy freeze, as I remember it, was based on the average six years, past six years of non-employment income. So that four percent is down to what, ten-four percent, we've had years when it was zero.
Mm-hmm.
And, and because of that, something else the state did for us about ten years ago, was it went, went through and looked at all the counties in Indiana to see who was levying at their max and who wasn't. And those, Fort Wayne and Allen County was one that was not levying at their max rate, and the state legislature just set the, reset the max rate for those county, rate for those counties, down to what it really was, and stiff down to millions and millions of dollars. So, I mean, it's virtuous to not want levy to max, but don't, don't think that if you levy one year, you're going to get locked in in the future. So that's, but then again, who bets against the state legislature?
Yeah, yeah. Mayor Ted, just curious, when, back in two thousand and eight, when we chose the, the percentage that we went with on the CAGIT, or what we called Lloyd at that time, that's when they froze. Do you remember the reason why? Was that part of the state statute? If you did one, you had to freeze your, your property taxes?
One or the other.
One or the other? Okay, I thought that's, at that point in time, was that in two thousand and eight, two thousand and seven in that timeframe, roughly, I'm guessing?
That's when we did all of our ordinances.
That's when we did the ordinances, so we assumed that was what, it was if you did one, you had to do the other, so. So here we are at this, at this date, nine, eight, nine years later with what we're discussing here, so. So I guess if there's no, any other comments or questions from the crowd? I guess at this stage, are we required to make a decision tonight? Are we still?
Well, not necessarily on the other ordinance.
I mean, I think there's some questions on how much money does it generate for Wells County? You know, if we thaw, that, you know, Vicki had a question, you know, in regards to that.
It would generate the same way whether we thawed or didn't thaw, it would just generate more for income tax.
Well, I, I know that we want to thaw, I didn't know whether we had the choice of making a percentage choice, you know what I'm saying, how much percentage? But as the mayor's saying, and I understand that, because that same thing happened to us with bus replacement. They show you haven't spent it, you haven't spent it, or you haven't requested it, so we're just going to drop it down to where you had it, and then they won't let you have it. So we have to be cautious on how we do things, so that we know we're getting what we need.
Yeah, was that because of the thaw, you're saying?
It was just bad economy, and they decided they would take control of that.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. Any other questions? At this point? So I guess we're, you know, we all, we all sensed the agreement, we didn't want to raise any income taxes.
Correct.
Raise our lit, so the, the levy freeze, thawing the levy freeze was what we were looking to lean towards. So by doing that, if I understand it right, we're not looking at these other three options, right? If we just thaw the levy freeze?
That's completely different things.
Yeah.
We have to thaw before we can do those other ones, no, right?
No.
You can do this without thawing?
Yeah, do it without thawing. But that affects.
Just different, different things you could do.
It affects the income, the lit side of the, you'd be raising income tax to do these other three.
No, you would not.
Well, I guess, no, that's right, that's right, the credit would be, yeah, because I think we talked that, that made it some sense, but again, how far do we go?
But we also discussed of not making too many changes at once in one year.
Yeah, one time.
That's, that's the other thing that we.
I do have a question. When you're talking about public safety costs and what is involved there, can you explain that just a little bit?
Yeah, there's only, it's by statute, the, the lit, public safety, and there's only certain things that you can spend it on, like we could not spend that for supplies for my office, or anything at my office. We could spend it for jail, sheriff, probation, community corrections, you know, any judicial, you know, a lot of judicial, but that means public safety, so most likely, we'd be looking at sheriff or jail budget, the money, that's where we spend it at now.
Right.
We, we spend for the rescue unit, and now the security equipment, and then, you know, for other equipment that's needed at the jail, you know, it just, it's, our public safety rate is point oh five percent.
Okay.
So the county brings in like a hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
And again, that's based on income tag, on lit, comes from the lit, right?
It's part of the lit.
Part of the lit, not from the property tax side, just the lit.
Right. It's part of the lit.
I mean, sometimes it's just trying to keep the two organized in my mind. I have trouble, where's the money coming from as you do each one of them?
Income tax, right.
So money I receive from that is what may do upgrades that the budget wouldn't allow me to do.
Yeah. The general fund, just the general fund budget wouldn't do that.
By making changes, we'd get more money into that. We would get less pressure on the general fund. You could use the lit money for more stuff for the jail, you know, versus the general fund.
Darren had discussed more of that side of it.
Yes. So you could use it that way, which would be the same way for municipalities.
But again, if we do that, we penalize.
Yeah. It's, it's, yeah, exactly. So like I said, I think that the safest thing, in my, my opinion, is if we thaw the levy freeze, that's a pretty safe thing as far as going that step. The rest of the steps then are more complicated and more, more steps that we're dealing with. I don't know how everybody else feels or what they're thinking here, what their thoughts are. Jimmy, any thoughts on...
Hey, I was around when we done the freeze and of course, we were given the two options. At the time, the freeze was like the best thing to do, you know. And really, it has panned out for quite a while.
It's got control.
You know, the last few years, we just need population.
And times were different. In 2008 was when the recession was on. And so, you know, you had to do a different type of strategy than what we need to do on this now.
Well, I guess at this point, do we want to go ahead and forward and take a motion on thawing as far as the freeze goes at this point in time? And again, we have to wait on the ordinance because Roy would have to have the ordinance of...
I have ordinance, but, you know, like I said, they did say we could go ahead and adopt the ordinance and give it the ordinance number. But we would sign it at...
Later date.
September 13th meeting because we could still adopt it today.
Adopt it today with a motion as far as, because it's just...
As a motion, but then we would sign it and then I would actually...
But we could go through our budget sessions and then do that.
Yes.
It's still adequate to do that in addition.
Time to do that.
I would prefer to do it after we go through our budget sessions.
Budgets. That'll give a little more time also.
Get a little more information from the DGF.
I see value in that also. It's a good, good idea.
But I would like to have some kind of motion. So that way I could tell the LGF when they meet with taxing units that, you know, he knows what to do with taxing units.
With Roy, you say, or George?
No, George. Up to next week.
With George.
Because he's going to meet with taxing units starting the 11th.
Is this on a mess up, your guy that's coming in to talk, George?
That's why, that's why we need to let George know.
So I think we probably need to decide something here. So George knows what to do when we get ready to, not afterwards, but here before.
Well, the 13th, we're going to be meeting next week. So I guess we could do a straw poll. And if everybody is in agreement, you think, you're gonna have to because we're starting to review. George, I guess, do you think he'll be able to communicate? You know, then we can make official action.
Yeah. If it don't work, it don't work. I, I don't know.
You would feel more comfortable if we adopted it tonight?
I would feel more comfortable if I put it in the minutes tonight that you would thaw and that you will be signing the ordinance on September 13th.
I mean, I have no reservations against it myself. I just...
I like my suggestion for certain reasons.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Just so taxing units know, George knows what to do with taxing units. I hate that, you know, that's why, their email they sent me. They said, oh, I apologize for giving you this at the last minute. Well, I can't, Roy prepared the ordinance, so I can't change it. He would have to change it.
I really can't see a scenario where we would backtrack on this even, even a week from tonight.
Well, I could put it in the minutes that you want to adopt the ordinance on the 13th.
We could, I mean, if there was, yeah.
To adopt the ordinance on the 13th.
Yeah. That'll give us a case. Then we could always rescind it at that time if there was something totally out of the...
We haven't said a final wording. We're agreeing to an agreement that's not final. So I haven't read it.
That's exactly. So if we, if we make a motion to accept thaw...
So we can just make a motion?
We can make a, accept the thaw pending September 13th, saying the, saying the amended ordinance to, so...
That we agree to that.
We agree. The 13th, then, we would sign the amended ordinance, assuming he would have it to us at that time. And then we can look it over. And at that point, if there's something we do not like, we can always back out of here.
Well, yeah, that way I can get it to you. That's why, so he'll probably get it to me tomorrow. I'd say that get to you, can review it. And then when we meet on the 13th, we probably should sign it that day.
Sound agreeable?
That would be agreeable.
Okay. I guess we'll, we have a motion to accept the amended, or the levy freeze amendment ordinance pending the September 13th meeting for signature.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Who's the same? Motion carries. All right. Any other miscellaneous business that...
I don't think so. I think that was enough.
Yeah, we've had everything else.
No, I don't have anything.
Thanks for your input, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Ted. We appreciate that. It's a little confusing when you see all the different sides of the coin, how the state operates here. So I guess if we don't have any other further business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Signify by raising your hand. All favor? Who's the same?